Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council for Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Call a meeting to order, approve the council agenda, any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, any additions or corrections for you?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve the council, the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Implication. Thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely, thank you. Let us pray. Lord God, in these beautiful, warm spring days, as the earth explodes to life again, we see all the evidence of your goodness and your blessing upon us. And we pray, Lord, that you would continue to provide for the life you created as you intended. But Lord, as we look around, we see also so much evidence of how the world is broken, that it does not function with the goodness and blessing that you intend. And so, Lord, we pray also for guidance, for wisdom, for your blessing and providence, that all that we do may pursue your will and may seek to build up that goodness that you intended for this world. We pray, Lord, for these leaders of our city, elected and appointed, for the citizens of our community, but also leaders of our state, our nation, of the world. Lord, lead them all in decisions and actions that will pursue your will and your desire to bless all living creatures. And so, Lord, these things and whatever else you see that we need, I pray today in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Next, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Public comment, citizens addressing the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Any approval of minutes? We have regular meeting minutes of April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Can't wait to see it. Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off their discussion. A is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the High Island Lake Conservation Club on June sixth and seventh, two thousand twenty-five, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. B is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Bobber Brewery Company on June twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at Masonic West River Park. C is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Minnesota Pottery Festival on July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, at Masonic West River Park. D is approval of VFW parking lot event on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. E is approval of amending Memorial Day Highway Road. F is approval of granting permission to the Crow River Winery to dispense liquor at upcoming events. That would be the Hutchinson J.C. Water Carnival, Masonic West River Park, Minnesota Pottery Festival, Masonic West River Park, the Garlic Festival, McCloud County Fairgrounds, Arts and Crafts Festival at Library Square. G is approval of resolution number one five eight six three, amending resolution number one five seven two two, establishing income guidelines and assessment limitations for senior citizens sixty-five years or older, disabled citizens, active duty military reserve or National Guard deferred assessments, and senior citizen reduced rate, refuge rate. H is approval of resolution number one five eight six four, resolution to sell, auction, unclaimed Hutchinson Police Department property and bicycles. I is approval of resolution number one five eight six five, resolution to donate unclaimed Hutchinson Police Department property. J is approval of resolution number one five eight six six, resolution to appropriate unclaimed property to the Hutchinson Police Department use. K is approval of resolution number one five eight six seven, resolution to dispose of surplus property, that's miscellaneous creekside items. L is approval of FAA entitlement transfer from the city of Hutchinson to the city of Buffalo. M is approval of funding for design and development of downtown signage and festival street projects. N is approval of accepting bid for Franklin Site Bank Stabilization Project. O is approval of granting drainage system easement for the McCloud County ditch eighteen. P is approval of asphalt overlay for the cemetery roadways. Q is claims appropriations and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We'll skip down and we'll go to the Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority Year End Report.
Just for the council, the public, our public hearing's scheduled for six o'clock, so we'll have to wait until that time.
Judy said it was going to be short and sweet, so.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Judy Fleming.
Judy, can you see if that microphone's on? Should be a green light on. There it comes.
Now back up. Hello, I'm Judy Fleming, the executive director from the Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment, and I'm here to present our annual report. So, I kind of kept the same slide as before, but it's always a good refresher, that the Hutchinson HRA was formed by the city council in nineteen sixty-nine. We own and manage Park Towers Apartments, and our other hat is to administer the housing programs here in the city of Hutchinson. One of my little promo is our website. If you go there, we always keep, as best as possible, our most current programs for owner occupied, rental rehab, any kind of programs that we have available right now. So, as usual, I like to give you some of our yearly comparisons. And as you can see, we always start with our rental vacancy, because that's a big hot topic. And it is getting better. It's three point eight-two percent this year. The optimal is five percent, and that for a healthy market. We're getting there. The subsidized general occupancy units are where we see the most vacancies right now. And we did see a slight increase in the median rents in two thousand twenty-four. Another statistic that we collect on an annual basis is the home resales. We get the information from the McCloud County Assessor's Office. And as you can see, in two thousand twenty-four, we didn't have as many home sales as in twenty-three, but the median home sale price did continue to go up. Another thing that's nice to look at, we're always hearing about mortgage rates and everything, in two thousand twenty-four, it pretty much stayed the same. I mean, it had a little ups and downs. And as you can see, I looked at the mortgage rate for a thirty-year fixed home mortgage rate is at six point six-two as of the beginning of the month. So, it was down a smidge from a year ago, and this is data from Freddie Mac. And that's my ex lender for me at the jury. So, the other piece that we looked at is the foreclosures. And since the foreclosure big crash, it's been kind of stable. Where the last few years haven't changed. We look at what is in the city, which was five, and then the county had sixteen. Now, to give you some demographics about Park Towers residents, we've been seeing that the average age of the household is going down a little bit. So, now it's at fifty-four. And the majority of the annual income of our tenants is right in that range of ten thousand to the maximum limit of the thirty-five-nine for an annual household income. We do have quite a few, though, at the zero, too. Some of the accomplishments that we did at Park Towers, we had eleven move-ins, seventeen move-outs. We had our city rental registration inspection with the building department here was, went really smooth. Our housing specialist, she got her certification last year for the program. So, Park Towers gets funding from HUD, and it's the multifamily housing division. They decided that they didn't want to monitor the contract anymore, so they're contracting with Minnesota Housing to monitor us. And it was a big conversion process we had to go through. We also, they also required us to switch our accountant that we use at Park Towers, so that they were familiar with our multifamily program. And of course, we had multiple staff training for all the changes and new programs HUD's going through. One of our other big goals at Park Towers is to keep our asset preservation, property improvements, energy improvements going. So, we had a twenty-year plan that we had to create when we converted from public housing to multifamily. And a lot of these are part of that plan. The first one for her, it's the replacement of the maintenance garage roof. And then, of course, we had multiple boiler system and exhaust repairs throughout the winter we had to do. We replaced the flooring in both of our elevators. We had to replace two toilets in our public bathrooms on the main floor. One of the things that our board is very committed at to is to replace the carpet out of our units at unit turns with vinyl planking. And then, we also, it's a good time, then we're also replacing the power flush toilets. So, we did nine units for both of that. And then, there was a handicap accessible range that needed to be replaced and an air conditioner unit. Our other hat, our city center operations, we did our owner occupied city home improvement grant programs. Those were established from some TIV funds back in two thousand fifteen. We had quite a few applicants, the eligible applicants, you can see, are broke down there. Majority of the time, it's the HVAC and exterior things, as you can see. Another benefit that we do for the community is we administer state programs to help people fix up their homes. Minnesota Housing is a big funder for us, and we administer two of their programs. The one, we only did this in two thousand twenty-four, and we did two projects. And those are definitely more intense projects. The other big accomplishment in two thousand twenty-four was the house move project. So, the Hutchinson HRA moved the two-bedroom, one-bath Rambler that was donated from the city of Hutchinson slash EDA to a vacant lot that we owned out at Island View Heights. We put in a brand-new foundation basement with, it's unfinished, so for expansion space, egress windows. We put, we built a two-stall garage attached to it. The construction rehab was done fall of two thousand twenty-four, and it was sold in December. Yay. That was good timing. Now, we'll talk about some of our priorities. First, we'll start with Park Towers. Of course, making HUD happy is our top priority over there at Park Towers. So, we'll continue to administer their program and follow up with all the trainings for the new programs and changes that they'll be having this year. Our housing specialist, she wants to go for the engineering boiler license for Park Towers to run all our boilers up there. We'll continue with installing our vinyl planking and power flush toilets at unit turns. Some of the big improvements that we have on our card for this year, and a little bit into next, is we're going to be replacing, currently, we have keyless entries to the units and to the building while the program's sunsetted, so we have to replace every unit's key card and door lock. So, that'll be happening next week. Hopefully, that'll go smoothly. And we've installed already a secondary system, heating cooling system in our laundry room, because we just got new appliances in there, and we want to keep them for a long time. Our plan is to replace all the unit smoke detectors. We also want to, since we placed the flooring in the elevators, we want to expand outside of the elevators in the common areas on each of the seven floors. And one other big project that I'm excited about, we'll be working with Mike, hopefully, is a big sewer main replacement, and we'll coordinate with the city. And we've applied for grants and stuff like that. So, that's one of our big things that we'll be doing, hopefully, this year into next year. Another one that I'm sure you guys have heard about is retrofitting high-rises with sprinklers. Congress has been working on grant funding for that. So, we'll keep an eye on that to see how they spell it out for grants. And the other one is, is we will continue to support our tenant council and all their activities that they do. City center priorities. First of all, we'll talk about owner occupied. We'll continue to administer the city home improvement grant program. It is getting in its final stages. Funding is getting low on that. And then, we'll continue with our Minnesota Housing Rehab Loan Programs to the Rehab Loan and the Fix-Up Fund. We'll market the programs throughout the community so that people know what we have available. The website is the best, most up-to-date. We're gonna, the HRA is working on proposals to use for the statewide affordable housing aid and other city revolving funds. We're going to identify and determine interest for applying for another small cities owner occupied rehab program through deed. The next piece is the rental rehab. We'll see if we can identify a need for applying to deed for rental rehab. We have been, the next bullet point, propose use for city revolving funds. We have been surveying and corresponding with the downtown rental property owners, and we're coming up with a downtown rental rehab program. And I'll be coming back to you, because we do need to have a public hearing to talk about that program. So, hopefully, you'll be seeing me again shortly. The other one is, we'll keep exploring the different resources. They keep coming out with different things at Minnesota Housing that the state set up for housing needs that we want to address, that were identified in our housing study. And we still have two remaining lots out at Island View Heights. So, we are working on determining what we want to do with those last two. That is it. Any questions?
I don't know. Judy, can you talk about a live and work in Hutchinson?
Yeah, that's part of our city home improvement group of grants. So, we have different breakouts out of it. And one of them is, so they're all home improvements. So, you do have to own the property. But this live and work one is where you've just purchased a home in your first-time home buyer. So, you're purchasing a home in Hutchinson, and then you're working in Hutchinson. And it's a, it's a grant for ten thousand dollars to do an improvement to your home that you just purchased. That one's been our most successful one of those, and it's a pretty high income limit. It is listed on our website, if you want to check it out and look at it. So, are the other ones, we have, another breakout of it is where it's half and half. You pay up, half of the rehab cost, and we pay the other half up to ten thousand dollars on that one. So, a lot. And the beauty of these programs is that they're citywide. They're not targeted to a neighborhood or anything like that. So, anybody can apply any funding.
Anything else for Judy?
It still includes the income levels?
All of our programs have an income level, but a lot of them, like this one, it's a, it's a higher income limit. We, we have, like, different levels of programs to help different people, so, at different income limits. So, you can contact us at these numbers, and we can help you determine if we have a program to help you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Thanks, Judy.
Yeah, we still have eight minutes before six o'clock, so if you want to work your way on down the, on very old business and new business, we can attack some of those before.
All right. Well, let's do unfinished business. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-five five, ordinance amending section one fifty-four-point-zero-six-seven of the Hutchinson City Code regarding I-1 zoning district.
Mayor Council, I'll take this one tonight. This is our second reading of this ordinance. There's been no changes since the first reading. As you recall, this ordinance was being proposed and was approved by the planning commission with recommendation to the city council to add data centers to the I-1 Light Industrial District, which, like I said, currently, there's that type of uses currently not allowed or not found in any of our zoning code. And so, this would be the addition of that. Once again, this would be consideration of the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. Like I said, there's been no changes since the first reading.
I can make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
We'll call. Tim?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pat?
Nay.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. Pass four to one. All right. Let's do one more quick here. Issuing food vendor license to wheels on wheels barbecue and catering LLC.
Yeah, Mayor Council, we have an application in front of you for essentially a food truck to be used on public property. Actually, I think this is the first time we've had a food truck request. We've had some requests in the past, a lot of those would be more of the ice cream truck that you see go throughout town. So, but the application has been reviewed by, by city staff and the, and the police department. There are no concerns with that license.
So, Matt, if, the way I saw it was that they're, he's looking at using the overflow lot for the liquor hutch. Is there anything to prevent him from doing, from being in the old video store parking lot, or is that?
That's private property, so.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah. But any public street he can?
Any public street, or really any public parking lot, he would be allowed to, to use. I know there is a request from Candace to, to be provided with some, some notification. You could use that in the inclusion of, the acceptance of it. But that's really up to the council to decide, so.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
Still got four minutes, so if you want to.
Should we attack this one?
Sure.
Request for deferred assessment for property at one, at four ninety, I-7 East.
Mayor Council, included in your packet was the request from the property owner, who I know was in attendance tonight. If you would want to ask, if you want to, if you would want to ask him any questions, it's completely up to you. There is a request regarding a deferred assessment that was on the books for a property that dates back to actually work that was done in nineteen ninety-six. The land, the property exchanged hands in, in two thousand twenty. And I know there was not a disclosure from the seller of the land. I believe there was not an assessment search done by the title company at that time either. And so, I think upon the, the property owner looking into a lot split, was when we found, or was when it was revealed that there was this deferred assessment on there. The request is that the property owner would pay ten thousand of the thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and four cents that's available, or that's outstanding for the assessment. So, the request would be to waive three thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and four cents, which would be interest on that deferred assessment. I think in my tenure here, this is probably the third or fourth request that has come forward to the, the council. Historically, we have not approved requests for deferrals, but it's really up to the authority of the city council to, to consider and/or to grant any of those type of requests.
You have any questions for, anybody have any questions for Ian?
I guess, yeah, I feel bad that there's, this thing has come up, but also, I don't, myself personally, I don't want to set a precedent to take away those, those assessments that were there. And unfortunately, whoever didn't, whether the seller didn't find, come forth, or if you didn't search, whatever it was, that's just my personal thing. I don't want to set a precedent to just waive those extra fees.
I would tend to agree. We know Mr. McDonald's done a lot of good things in Hutchinson, but to set that precedence under other factors, I think that, that would be a denial from my aspect of it, so.
It's up to you, Ian.
Go ahead.
Can you just state your name and address for the record?
No.
Thank you.
Ian McDonald, two zero six five eight, Bellegro Road, Hutchinson. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So, thanks for considering this. I know it's maybe not something that you've approved in the past, and I'm hearing your comments, and Andy Reed prepared me for that. But this is something that I feel that the city has some participation in its occurrence. And I just want to present this to you for your consideration. This is a assessment that was originated, I thought, in nineteen ninety-four, maybe it was ninety-six, whatever, a long time ago, way before, you know, I was even in town. And it was to the owners of the property that I bought it from. My purchase agreement said that all assessments would have been paid for by the seller. The title company I hired was to perform an assessment search, and that was missed. But also, during that But also during that entire time, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the city never once sent a statement to this owner to remind them of the fact that they had a deferred assessment. And I can, you know, I can forgive somebody for forgetting something that may have occurred thirty years ago. And, uh, things that have happened subsequent to its, uh, you know, to it being known are another matter. But to me, the, the city does have some involvement in this occurring, even though it was born of other mistakes as well. So that's why I'm asking for participation, basically. I've already paid ten thousand dol- excuse me, ten thousand dollars, uh, as I agreed in that request letter that I sent you. And so, you know, knowing that you haven't done it before, I respect that. You don't want to set a precedent. I don't really think that this is something that occurs all that frequently also, based on the comments that were made earlier. And I don't think that these circumstances are alike in other circumstances with much frequency either. So, uh, considering my request, I don't think is a major breach of your policy. Thank you.
I just will, I just will speak to it. It, it's not a, a common practice for the city to send out. Ian's correct, it's not a practice for the city to send out, um, deferred assessment notices. I, I will note, those do get recorded with the property when they get.
Filed.
Um, I think right now there's about eighty-one deferred assessments that we have on, on the books. I mean, I think that's something through the circumstances we've talked about. That's something that we could start implementing and start doing, but it is not a practice of, of the city, nor has it been a practice in the past to, to send out reminders to property owners.
Can I ask why it didn't come up on a search?
It was not performed.
The search was not performed.
The title company didn't perform a search. That was an error, uh, on the title company's part. Say again?
Can you go after the title company?
You know, I've been working on this for four years, so, uh, anyway. I just want to be able to develop property and I, I'm just looking for, you know, I look for the seller to honor their commitment. I look for the title company to honor their commitment. And, uh, I feel like I'm being a stand-up citizen by at least paying most of the, uh, the assessment, uh, after incurring legal fees and all this other stuff to try to get it resolved. Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
No, I, I, I do feel bad, but, I mean, it's, uh, you know, it, trouble is it's buyer beware. I hate to say it, but I, um, guess I'd entertain a motion to.
This is a tough one.
Yeah. I, I feel bad, but, um.
Well, I'm trying to put together a timeline here and everything too, and, and that's where, uh, you know, because we normally don't run into issues like this, but we're going back to twenty twenty when the property was purchased. Uh, the, the city was contacted in November thirtieth of twenty-two. Is that what I'm understanding there? If you would, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm like divided on this and I.
Yeah, uh, I bought the property in May of twenty twenty. And then a year went by, uh, i- in twenty-one, I began the process, uh, I'm going to check my dates here, of doing a lot split. And it was during the process of doing a lot split that, uh, I was informed by somebody at the city about the presence of the deferred assessment. This was a surprise to me and it basically put me on hold with my plans to develop the property. At that point, I went to the sellers or attempted to go to the sellers. And I also went to the title company and asked for relief, basically. Hey, you guys, you know, this mistake was made or you didn't know about it and, you know, it's here, you should have paid it. And I worked on that in a nice way for basically three years before I resulted to hiring an attorney and, uh, pursuing, uh, the seller to honor, uh, honor the amount owed, which they ultimately have paid. But I incurred several thousand dollars, you know, in pursuing it. Uh, and so I'm not being made whole. I'm not coming out even unless I request some participation from the city, which I think is fair. I mean, I'm, I've done my work. I've tried for four years to have it be done. And, uh, now it, that part is done and I have enough money to pay it off. Uh, the ten thousand that I submitted is the amount that I have net.
When you say developed, so there's two lots that are undeveloped?
No, it was one lot. Uh, I split it into two.
I was wondering why, nothing had been done, but this is.
Yeah, this is why, uh, a part of why. Uh, the lot on Michigan Street is just across the street from Crow River Glass. And, uh, I have plans to put a building on that property. They were going to start, uh, two or three years ago. Now they're going to start next year.
So Ian, you just made a comment that the assessment was paid off. Did they pay that to the county?
No, they paid it to my attorney.
Okay.
And then I paid you or paid the city.
The ten thousand?
Yep.
They paid the original, not the interest on top or part of the origin. Uh, shortfall is.
The shortfall is the result of legal fees. Yeah.
Counsel just offered this up. You can obviously make a decision now or you can table it to consider it and then bring it back, uh, at, at your next meeting if you want.
Guess I'm thinking I'd like to table it to have more discussion about this mainly because I don't think it's, when we talk about the, we don't want it to be the norm, the normal. I mean, there's so many mistakes made up to this point that I don't think this falls under what we would, I would consider normal. You know, we, you have a deferment, you had a sale. I mean, this is years ago. You had a property owner that was making a sale, you have a title company that failed and. Yeah, I think I, if I motion, I'm going to mo- motion to table this, to do a little bit more studying on this. Because I don't, I don't think, if you want to vote on it, I'm fine, but I'm going to vote. Because I think there's too many differences in here that it's not setting a normal pattern.
Have a motion to table it?
I would make that motion.
I will second it.
To our next meeting?
To our next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Do you have a motion of a second, that's one discussion?
Uh, motion by Tim, second by myself, to table it till next meeting. Any other discussion? Oh, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who say aye? Motion carries.
Thanks for your consideration.
All right, we'll go back to our public hearing. Uh, we have, uh, first reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight five four, ordinance adopting section ninety-three point four one five of the Hutchinson City Code chickens.
Give me a second, Mayor Council, I'm going to pull up the ordinance. I did put copies out on the table. If anybody, um, who's here maybe didn't, didn't grab it, there is a copy of the proposed ordinance, um, out on the table as you enter into the council chambers. So, once again, as the, the mayor noted, this is a consideration of a first reading of an ordinance that, uh, would regulate backyard chickens within town. So I just want to spend a little bit of time before the mayor opens it up for public comments, just to go through some aspects of the ordinance. If, uh, anybody hasn't had opportunity to see it online, um, or here prior to the meeting. There was one minor change I want to highlight, uh, as well. Um, first off, the first part of the ordinance identifies, um, or defines, um, you know, things like it's at large chicken coop, rooster run. Essentially, the ordinance would require, uh, someone to obtain a license from the city if they were to, to have chickens in town. As a part of that licensing, it's only being proposed that it be allowed for single family or two-family properties, along with use at a public, private or charter school. Um, the current regulation would allow a maximum of six chickens per parcel with none of them being roosters or crone birds. And based off the discussion, we did increase that to twelve chickens at a public, private or charter school for educational purposes. And then some of the other requirements talk about the need obviously to provide sufficient food and water. Um, section four talks about, uh, what would be required, which includes, uh, um, diagram or picture of a coop and its location and how they're going to comply with the ordinance. Talk about a license fee, which should have to be established by the council in our fee schedule. Um, and then provides a cert- you have to have a certificate of completion with public, with a public education course. I have had conversations with Minnesota Extension. They are in the process of putting together a program for the city similar to what they did with Maple Lake. So, so there is basically be a video that anybody who would be looking to get a, a license would have to watch prior to, um, getting that, that there'd be a certificate that they could print out that they watched it.
Quiz on the end of it too.
Yeah, yeah, small little quiz. Um, part of the requirements is talking about making sure that, uh, the properties or, or the area with chickens are kept in sanitary condition, conditions. Talk about odors not being detectable, um, timely removal of feces and food scraps. Talked about dead chickens needing to be removed within twenty-four hours. This is one minor change and this is just to kind of comply with our current communication that's going on with our compost to write. But waste of any kind from chicken coops are unsh- not be placed in the curb side organics cart. So instead of city, same city compost, um, Andy asked if I could update that. And so that, that just kind of stays consistent with our, um, our language. We talk about not being allowed to slaughter them in town. Um, you have to comply with Minnesota's law for cruelty to animals. I should say, should, can't slaughter on the premise. It could be slaughtered in town at a butcher. Um, they need to be confined to enclosed coop or run at all times and not allowed to be running at large. And we did put in, this was a, based off of comments that the last time we had a discussion about, um, you know, any unexplained sickness or signs should be reported to a local veterinarian or the Minnesota Board of Animal Health. Talk about our licenses aren't transferable, do not run with the property. So if a property owner were to move out, that doesn't guarantee that the next one would be able to continue with, uh. And there's requirements within the ordinance that talk about structure and sizes. Um, meaning they have a solid roof, windows, um, can have lights but not heat lamps. Um, I want to just make sure emphasize that because I know there's been some concerns about fire. Um, talking about the size of the area that's needed within it. Um, the ordinance also talks about location. Now it can't be in a front or side yard and no closer than ten feet from a property line and then no closer than twenty-five feet from, uh, neighboring residents. Talks about, um, revocation of a license and hearing requirements and then any violations of the, the ordinance. Um, we also put in some language here regarding, you know, if there is no longer being used for chickens, how the coop should be removed from the property. Um, we talked about with, um, some concerns of dog and cat owners that if, if they happen to get out and kill, we're not going to consider those as dangerous animals. We also highlighted that we're not going to be having our police department out chasing wild chickens. So that's within the ordinance. And then one thing to know is that, um, if adopted, it'd become effective three months after its final passage and publication. So you're probably looking at if we have our first read at night, if we have your second reading. And if it's adopted later this month, you're probably looking at August, September for anyone to be allowed, which would also give us some time to get the educational program up and, and running. And so, like I said, that's a, a brief run-through of the ordinance. A copy of it was on our website prior to this, a copy was out on the table too. And so with that, Mayor, I think I'll hand it back over to you and if you want to lay some ground rules for the, the, the public hearing, whether, you know, we talked about timelines and, but I'll leave it up to you.
First off, does anybody have any questions for me?
I had a quick question because somebody emailed me and asked a question. I didn't have time to look it up. Uh, what is the setback for dog kennels?
Oh, I don't know, if we, I don't think we have any outside of probably six feet from a property line.
Six feet from the property line?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know, it stopped my head.
What did we set for the chickens? Was it twenty-five?
Ten feet of the property line, twenty-five feet from a residence.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And I don't believe we have any of those requirements for dogs.
Okay, and that was the question and I, like I said.
I know, somebody, yeah, somebody commented.
And I can find that for your, for your next meeting as well, so.
Any other questions for me? Otherwise, I'll open it up for public comment, but, uh, depending how many people have, uh, public comment. Uh, anybody want to speak?
Here, there's one of the other ones to speak.
Go, go ahead. Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please. Can you pull the microphone down a little bit, ma'am? Just pull it down. There you go, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I've been coming here tonight. Um, I'm not somebody who.
Ma'am? Could you say your name and address?
Um.
Name and.
My name is Louanne Fletto.
Okay.
I live at one five six five McDonald Drive Southwest in Hutchinson.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but I came here tonight because number one, I'm opposed to this, very much so. Um, I was raised on a farm and I have also worked for a farmer who had, an organic farmer, who had over two hundred birds, two hundred chickens, both roosters and hens. I'm here because I love chickens, but I want the best for them and the city is not the place for them. There is, to my knowledge, no veterinarian inside McLeod County that will treat a sick chicken. There is not one within fifty miles. So if a bird is sick, you're going to have to travel. You're going to have to travel. Chickens long outlive their ability to lay an egg. Most chicken farmers rotate their birds out after three years, three to four years maximum. They ban the birds and the oldest ones leave when the new batch comes in. The reason why is because eventually the number of eggs they produce is zero. They do not continue to produce eggs all their life long. Chickens will lay about three hundred eggs a year in the beginning, but by the time they are ten years old, it's down to about a hundred or less. And the fewer they lay, the more it becomes a liability. Now what are you going to do? Because it's not producing eggs for you and you're not certainly recouping the investment in the coop and in all the, the outlay that you made to have those eggs. What are you going to do with that bird? Where's it going to go? Part of Minnesota has enough of a problem finding fosters for their dogs and cats. No farmer around here who raises birds professionally as a business is going to take that bird because they get the birds from the company that takes their eggs and they will not take a strange bird when they have no idea what health status it has. Is it going to be abandoned? I tell you, there's a plenty of farmers out there who shoot cats and dogs and I wouldn't put a pass them to shoot a chicken if it started to do some damage. Chickens are not pets, people. They're poultry. They are raised for a purpose for meat and eggs, but they are not pets. The minute that chicken becomes a liability, are you going to be able to butcher it? Do you know of anybody here in town, if it has to go to a certified butcher? Is there any butcher in town that you know of that will take those birds and say, yeah, we'll butcher it? I don't know of any.
Ma'am, you got it.
It's traumatic to lose.
Your time's almost up, could you wrap it up?
I'm sorry.
Ten more seconds.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
One, uh, there's so much that I, I would like to say, but I'll wind it up with this. There needs to be recourse for people who object to this. If you don't have any recourse for agreements, addressing the agreements, for neighbors who object, you are cheating us of a way to say, no, we don't like this. If the chickens roam and they get out, and by the way, chickens fly. I have seen this in the farm I've worked. They fly over the fence that's eight feet tall.
All right, ma'am, your time's up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
I'm sorry. Um, I will send each of you a letter detailing my concerns. Okay?
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You may want to share, share this with the public how much time they, you were giving them, so.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was going to give three minutes, so anybody else? All right, um, motion to close. All right, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Motion.
Mayor Council's in front of you tonight is really a first reading of this, so what, what what's being asked of you is, as presented, with that one minor change, as I highlight in red, if you want to consider that as a first reading. Once again, any ordinance that's proposed by the city isn't adopted until after a second reading, which that second reading would, if, if approved tonight, the second reading will be scheduled for our next meeting, which is May twenty-seventh.
Then I will move to approve.
I'll second it. Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay.
Nay.
Roll call, Tim?
Aye, aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Yeah.
Nay.
Chad?
Aye.
I pass this four to one.
Once again, that's the first reading. The second reading would be held at our next council meeting on May twenty-seventh, so I would, I guess, inform the, the public, if you have any desire to express any other opinions to the city council, you can do that by email, phone, however the council members would take it. You can even email or mail myself to, or to me here at City Hall, but at this point, there's not schedules for another, scheduled for another public hearing, so.
All right, thank you. Moving on, resolution number one-five-eight-six-eight, resolution authorizing purchase of real estate property located at twelve Michigan Street Northeast.
Yep, Mayor, or, I'll leave it up to, go ahead, Mike, you know, I forgot that you were here, so I'm sorry.
I almost forgot to note that it was there. I was looking for it earlier. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening. Again, culmination of two closed-door sessions, we were fortunate to work out the details for a purchase agreement. You have that in your packet tonight for review. If approved tonight, we are anticipating a closing on May thirtieth at the end of the month, and seeking your approval tonight, pending any questions you might have.
Mike, when, when do they expect to do any digging up there then?
You know, the earliest would be next year, probably more likely twenty-twenty-seven. You know, we are going to seek, we are seeking right now some grant funding for design dollars. If successful, we would maybe start design this year. And we'll likely seek some grant dollars for development of the pond also. Again, it's our plan to use that for a pond, stormwater pond, and we would hope to seek that. It's very possible we'd use some combination of funding beyond grants to develop that pond also, as it supports our, you know, future project in that Clifton Heights neighborhood. But that might allow us a little more time, and one of the reasons twenty-twenty-seven's a possibility.
Mike, is we, there was some mention in there about soil testing. Have we done that, or are we doing that?
We have, and we will be. There really isn't a great concern. A little bit of the edge of that property runs along the former railroad bed, so it's not uncommon, you know, to see maybe, probably more in a depot setting, and I think we've experienced that with our own depot over the years. It's not real common to experience it along a railway, but we will do some due diligence and things there. We've done some very preliminary, but nothing at this point that indicates a concern, nothing also that would indicate probably a concern down the road.
As you've seen in the packet, that there is a individual that does farm that right now, so he was asking when, when something was going to happen there, so.
Mike, can you explain, I mean, because we've, this kind of just jumped up here, and just explain kind of where this is and what the mitigation is. I mean, this came from the sustainability of the water mitigation from the report that we had, basically to help drainage of the city.
Correct.
And just kind of explain the neighborhood that involves and what.
Yes, certainly. Last year, we wrapped up a north side of the community resiliency study, stormwater resiliency study, that informed basically six to seven projects. This was a, a portion of that project to basically take a lot of our stormwater from the northeast part of town that now goes to that Second Avenue pond. It was a pond that we cleaned out two years ago, but receives an excess amount of water in big rain events. And then it causes a surcharge, a backing up typically in that Clifton Heights neighborhood. And again, this would be that northeast portion of town, kind of behind the Elks Club, that residential area right there. That kind of borders the loose-line trail, is adjacent to, as it heads out of town to the east. And so, using that resiliency study information, you know, we looked at a way that we could potentially purchase a property in that area that would allow us to split a major portion of that water off, allowing Second Avenue to kind of receive what's probably an appropriate amount of water, and for us to take that water elsewhere. This property would support that. It's about five acres in size. At the same time, it's sized to where it would allow for some future development to the north. So if you think again, the area right across from the former Rockite silo, Marshals, or recently known as that small barn that's across the road from, behind that, between this pond and that, there's some developable land in there of about ten acres. It would support a potential development in there also in time. You know, right now, I don't think there's really anything anticipated, no one that's come to the city, but the good thing is this pond would support that development also. And so, again, we have on the books in twenty-twenty-seven to do some work in that Clifton Heights neighborhood. And so, the coordination with this pond would be ideal. And basically, right down the loose-line trail in our right-of-way, we would upsize the stormwater pipes and redirect that away from Second Avenue to this new pond at that point. So just kind of right along the area of pro-maintenance, this is just west of that at this point.
So twenty-twenty-seven would be important just to be able to, so we're not digging twice.
Correct, yeah. Twenty-twenty-seven, right now, and I think, you know, a few folks have maybe noted, Hutch Utilities has a large substation project they're about to start on that is in kind of this area. It's immediately south of that neighborhood. And so, we're, we're kind of purposefully, and it worked out for us financially, too, to be able to do this a year or two from now, to allow them really the time to kind of finish up their project. Should likely be able to open the trail then again at that point, and allow us then to do this portion of the project.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mike? Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by, motion by Tim, second by Chad. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Sending budget workshop for May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five at three-thirty P M.
Yep, Mayor Council, it's that time of year, we'll start the budget process. And so this is kind of our annual budget kickoff meeting. I did move it up a half hour earlier because I'm spending a little bit extra time talking about compensation at the cities. I'll be a part of this this workshop, so I just asked the council to consider setting that for three-thirty before our next council meeting.
Motion approve.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave, to set that meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Chief Jefferson, you got anything for us tonight? Mike, you got anything? Construction-related, I take it?
Construction would be one of them.
Yeah, our Assen Street project is off to a good start this week in particular. They're starting to gain some momentum, starting some of our underground utility work. And again, it's progressing well. Residents have been great to work with at this point, so it's progressing. Again, Dale Street kicks off right after school is done, so we're still a few weeks from it, along with Stony Point. We'll, we'll get done at that same point, given it's proximity to the school. Second thing I want to mention, and again, we have let the affected industries, including the hospital, know about this, but a week ago Sunday, we had a major water hammer incident in the water plant that blew apart one of our sixteen-inch lines on our R O system. The R O system is a wonderful water treatment process, really leaves us with a very high-quality finished water. But we were down for about a week. We just brought the R O system back online yesterday, so about seven days, eight days afterwards. And so residents may have noticed, you know, just a little harder water. Their morning cup of coffee might have looked a little bit different. That were some of the comments, for those that were really in tune to their coffee, some comments on it. And again, more so a few of the industries who really rely on a high, you know, quality water had noticed it. So they were our first contacts last Monday, but the system is up and running. And it'll take a couple of days to really, you know, kind of work its way through the whole system, but it, it should be back to what you would expect here, I would say, in the next day or two. And then finally, next week is the National Public Works Awareness Week, celebrated nationally by the American Public Works Association, so we'll do a little bit of work and recognition with the staff, as well as do a little bit on Facebook and things, too, but if you happen to notice or run into any of our public work staff, perhaps note that. So I just wanted to mention that. That kicks off Sunday and runs through next Saturday. Any questions otherwise?
Nope.
Thank you.
All good, thanks. Mr. Sabora, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing else tonight.
All right. Tim, let's start with you.
The library board's next week, and you heard kind of the sustainability update, so that's what I have to do.
Dave?
Only thing I have is Memorial Day weekend, which is the twenty-sixth, in which we won't meet until the twenty-seventh, so basically, the parade and the ceremony that goes on in Veterans Park is always very good, and a punch for the Lions will be handing out water, so.
Thanks, Dave. Pat? Chad?
I had a Parks Board meeting, a couple of things. They're putting in a R C car track down in Tartan Park. That'll be exciting, working with a user group that's gonna do some volunteering to put it in. They're down a guy in the Parks Department, so, which isn't a great time of year for that to happen, it's in the spring, but they have an employee moving to Florida, so we're gonna miss him. And then we're talking about putting together a better process if there's a user group that wants to do a special project in a park instead of the chaos that exists today.
Yeah.
We're gonna talk about like what the Parks Board can do to help that process, so.
That would be wonderful.
It'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
So, that's all we had at Parks Board.
All righty. Ma'am?
A couple of things, as, as Dave noted, Memorial Day is the twenty-sixth, so city offices will be closed that day. There was a notice that went out, I think, to the neighborhood, but in case you hear something, as Mike noted, the Hutch Utilities is working a substation, and so part of that work is they're gonna have to close off a loose line. And so there will be a rerouting of that through Kimberly Park, so just kind of a heads up to the public that that's, that's gonna take place.
I know that well because Angie walks that way, and she don't like the bypass, the detour.
Hutch Utilities.
They're signing it up yet?
Yeah, there is, yeah. And they actually blocked off, put, put a
Like cone thing?
Coins up, yeah, and so, yeah. Coles up Michigan.
We did add a trail through Kimberly Park, so there's kind of green permission for residents walking or anything. That was done in coordination with this.
As we noted tonight, obviously, we set that workshop meeting for the twenty-seventh. This is kind of our kickoff meeting, so if there's something specific you want me to touch on regarding the budget, please, you know, send me an email or something in the next couple of days, so we can get that prepared for, for you. And then I think I've mentioned this maybe at our last meeting or through a separate email, but we're trying to have a joint meeting between Hutch Utilities, the E D A, and the city. They're looking at doing June fourth, which is a Wednesday, like a morning from seven A M. to nine A M. So I know it's a little bit different, but if anybody sees a significant issue with that, please let me know, otherwise I'll let Jeremy know, go ahead and try to schedule it. I mean, it's, as you can imagine, trying to schedule three boards to, to meet, so it'd be right here in the council chambers, but we're looking at June fourth from seven to nine A M., and we'll have that on our next agenda to formally set that, so. Otherwise, that's it for me.
All righty. Actually, we moved up our airport commission meeting because we had some stuff to take care of. The only other thing is that C A P usually has a fly-in pancake breakfast, and we lost our hangar that we usually have it in, so been kind of scrambling, and I think we have a good, good plan on getting it into a different hangar, and so that will still happen out there with the car show, so. That's about it for the, for the airport, and I didn't have no other meetings, so. Pat?
The Memorial Day block south is not Jefferson.
It comes.
Instead of. Not Jefferson instead of.
Um, isn't on Jefferson instead of Assen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. It will, everybody will congregate at the fire hall. And then it'll go northbound on Jefferson, and then onto First Avenue like it always does, but. So, yeah, for the public, more so than probably for you all, it, it is going to be the full length on Jefferson this year. It'll go back to Assen Street next year. On a brand-new roadway.
Yeah, thanks.
One last thing, too, Mayor, I guess I would say if there's anything specific that you're looking for regarding this tabled item tonight, regarding just to reach out to me and we can work on, I said, we'll put together a memo on, you know, some historical stuff and some legal stuff on that, and then if there's anything specific you're looking for, let me know.
Oh, one quick thing, I did pass out poppies. We got them from, from the gal, so grab a poppy and probably wear it, please. Otherwise, uh.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries.